It is 5:30 and so I get the opportunity here to break up all the conversations and get us started in what is a productive and interesting agenda in front of us. So with that Lynn, will you please start us out with a roll call?
Andy Rubichuk.
Present.
Pam Moore.
Present.
Jody Lundquist.
Present.
Kenner Weaver.
Here.
Ken Warner.
Here.
Mark Hui.
Here.
Thank you. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have, in addition to our agenda, you did receive this information from Lynn, we are adding item S onto, or excuse me, yes, item S onto the action items, and that is a board authorization request from Todd. So we do have that one addition. Are there any other additions, deletions, rearrangements of our agenda? Okay, with that, let's dive right into it and start with the heart of why we're here, the reason that we're here, our mission, our values, our vision. And today we have Sonya Laws here with us. Sonya is with the Marine Technology Program, a student, and we are so excited to hear how you're helping us pursue our mission and our vision and values. Sonya, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Happy to share. So as she said, my name is Sonya Laws. I'm a senior in the Marine Technology Program. I'm also getting an associate's in electronics. And this summer I had the opportunity to work with a company called NV5. They bought a geospatial hydrographic company called Geodynamics about four years ago. So I worked as a hydrographic survey technician this summer. And honestly, this program has just prepared me so well for the challenge of learning and adapting to their field of work, especially out on the water. And just finding this program was such an eye-opener and really just reignited my want for an education. Because I started as just a mechanical engineering student out in Cleveland, came out here to get a little break, started coming back for a certificate in renewable energy. And then after a few conversations with John, I found this program, realized that this was just going to be exactly what my skillset needed to challenge myself with, and actually put forth good and productive work. And honestly, this program has just been preparing us so much for the actual work. Getting access with the software that we're going to use, even though I didn't use the exact software, I learned enough of the school, enough of the tools and structure to just reapply it to a different program. Yeah, this summer opportunity was incredible. Just being encouraged to go out and get those internships for credit kind of boosts that professional training and growth. So it was really good to just immediately apply what I had been learning. And I've heard I've done a very good job. So it was definitely a boost in my confidence this summer, being able to just instill what I was learning. But yeah, they gave me the confidence to actually have responsibilities within their organization. So I went from an intern to having days on as their lead hydrographer because I had shown good work and good enthusiasm, and I had the knowledge base to actually hold me up in that position, so.
Outstanding. Thank you so much for sharing that with us tonight. The reason why it's important for us to hear this is because it reminds us when we make decisions, and we make decisions, you know, on a program like what you're in, it's important to hear from those that are experiencing it directly, the value that it brings to you. And so we really appreciate you being here, but we more so appreciate you being a student part of the NMC family. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead, Kenner.
Where do you see yourself doing five years from now?
Working out on the water somewhere, doing something scientific. So either as a hydrographic survey technician or an ROV technician, performing inspections or just monitoring the waters.
We have more comments than I anticipated, so I'll turn to Ken and then Mark.
So you said that finding the program was an eye-opener.
Oh, absolutely.
One of the things that I'm really struggling with, I think this is a very exciting, terrific program, nobody knows about.
No.
So I think it's a little challenge to you and your colleagues, your fellow students, if you could figure out some ways to help get the word out, because it's not a field people are aware of.
No, absolutely not.
You could figure that out.
I tell, I tell everyone that I meet.
Excellent.
And most of the time, they're like, wait, what?
Wait, where?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good point. Mark.
So in, sort of in the same vein as Ken, I wanted to find out NV5, that was a paid job?
Yes.
Okay, it was. And as we're trying to, with any innovator program that we have, align our programs with what employers are looking for. I'm just curious, how did NV5 find you or you find them?
Well, I was actually able to go to a conference, and I was able to meet with them, go on a demo, meet some of their staff. And then through that, I had some connections, and then was able to apply for their internship just directly to the program. And because I had some of those other connections and did well on the interview, they offered it. So it's going to be more competitive as the time goes on, but I think NMC has a really good advantage because we have so much hands-on training. And it would just, we come out already with experience, so even before you graduate.
And Mark, well, it's not finalized yet, and maybe Jason will say something later in his presentation. We're imagining NV5 is likely going to be our first tenant at the Freshwater Research Innovation Center.
That is exciting.
Yes, it is exciting. Thank you again.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely. Well, as we move out of that area, but still in our strategic focus, I would like to invite Jason Slade up to give us an update on the new NMC strategic plan, the one looking forward 26 through 29.
Those were great comments that Sonya shared with us. To Nick's point and to one of Mark's questions on there, we are working with NV5. They've signed up preliminary lease in the Discovery Center, which with the movement over to the Freshwater Research Innovation Center in January, pending review by their legal team. Probably more importantly, when you heard her say where she's going to be in five years, I envisioned her actually being one of our adjunct instructors as well. And then a great testimonial to the importance of our advisory boards. NV5 serves on our advisory board, has served on it almost since the inception, and so that gives them first access to our students and allows us to build curriculum so that she can not only be an intern there, but she actually can move up through the cycle. So again, the importance of those boards for our occupational programs. So this, transitioning to the strategic plan, this memo is super out of date, and I think that just shows you how quickly this plan is moving. So I'll give you a good rundown, but if I was presenting this next week, I'd probably share with you something completely different, and in two weeks, probably something different than that. But I'll give you where we're at now, and I think one of the takeaways that you can have from this is that your voice is being heard as well as the voices of the individual areas that we have been working with. So just a reminder, when we launched this plan, or the development of the new plan, we were wrapping down the old one, and we talked about, as we learned in that board study session, that this new plan will fulfill our mission, vision, and values. It'll serve as a continuation of the existing plan in many aspects, whether you want to call that 80-20, 90-10, whatever, but it'll carry over many of those themes, including enrollments to student success, program enhancement, but then also look at those things that we're currently working on. You were just in a study session around the Boardman Lake campus. That's dealing with our master plan and our campus vibrancy, both things which will be aspects of the new plan on there. Just a quick reminder, we talked about the current plan is, you know, or the plan that just wrapped up, so in the habit of calling it the current plan, the plan that just wrapped up, NMC Next, we had five strategies. It was a three-year timeframe. We used input in scan teams for that. This plan will also be a three-year timeframe. It'll again support those mission, vision, and values. It'll have that strategy, objective layout, hierarchy, and it'll rely heavily on our Strategic Plan Steering Committee and our Leadership Council, which is made up of our department heads, program chairs, and our key faculty members and others. And so again, we'll keep this process internal, and I think that makes sense, given the desire to have it be somewhat of a carryover from the previous one. Cycle on there, we're in the strategy development stage. Those are those big themes that we heard about from the Board of Trustees about let's have some goals around student success, let's have aspirational goals around what future focused education looks like, especially we talk about emerging technologies, and then also around vibrancy. Again, this was just to give you an idea of like, of where we are in the plan. We are currently in the strategy development stage. We'll be winding that down at the end of September, early October. We meet with Leadership Council October 3rd, which is the last, our first Friday in October to kind of transition from strategies to objective planning, or really bigger than objectives. What are these goals that this thing has to accomplish? What are the goals that this next strategic plan, what does it have to do? I'm going to fast forward a little bit on here because we've talked about that. One of the things that we have heard, and I've heard from you, and we've also heard from our Leadership Councils, we have to make sure that we have goals that bring together everybody in the NMC community. So that's looking at our stakeholders, our community partnerships, but also looking at our individual departments. How do we make sure that this plan isn't siloed? There was, at times, maybe people felt the previous plan did have some of that siloing, and how do we eliminate that? We've also been listening closely to individuals, stakeholders, others. So for instance, I meet with our department chairs later this week, just to review, hey, where were there opportunities in the previous plan and what should we be focused on? One thing that has bubbled up, and we've heard it loud and clear, is the desire to focus around three strategies or three strategic goals. One on future focused education, one on student engagement, success, and enrollment, and then our vibrancy and belonging. Now, those have all been revised. Jody, I'll give you a lot of credit, like we've done a lot of work on our Strategy Three, you had great input during that study session. That's not reflected here because we have a work in progress. So right now, these three strategies, which we'll share with the Steering Committee, which Mark is on on Wednesday, have been tightened and shortened to kind of reflect that input. And we're getting very positive feedback from early individuals. It still contains the theme, still is very lofty and aspirational, but at the same time really focuses on what are we going to do, or why are these, more importantly, not what we're going to do, but why are these the most important things that we should be working on? And then we've changed some of our language from enabling strategies to strategic drivers. It's to avoid some of the confusion. Again, it's still centered around these four here, but again, we've done a lot of work to shorten and tighten those, and then have been working on specific examples that we can share out with our respective Steering Committees, Leadership Councils, and others, so that they understand how these strategic drivers really set the tone or the framework for the objectives we build around those strategies. And so my takeaway for you would be that that feedback continues to be heard. Like I said, we have a number of engagement sessions over the next few weeks just around strategies, and then we evolve into the objective level. But each step of the way, we've gathered that feedback. And so where we're at now, if I was sitting in your shoes versus, you know, when you were sitting in the same room for the study session, is we've taken that feedback around those strategies and we continue to refine them. They're much tighter. I like where we're going. We've done work over the last week and even up until today around how do we use those strategic drivers properly to inspire champions and other stakeholders to develop the strategies that we need to move the college forward. And then we'll follow our process of engaging with that Steering Committee and other stakeholders as we continue to refine them. So when I'm up here in a month from now, I will give you the updated strategies, which probably have, will have evolved from even now and revised, and you can see those. And then I'll also give a tighter framework around those enabling strategies. And so each month you'll see a little bit more detail of where we're at in the process.
Great. One thing that I want to mention before I turn it over to my fellow trustees is, can you clarify for the board, I was made aware of it, Andy is a part of the foundation, you might remember this as well, but our foundation is making a good, bold move to bring their strategies into this one strategic plan, so the college and all of its entities operate from one strategic plan. Can you just reiterate that a little bit more so our board is fully clear on that?
Yeah, so we want the foundation to be tied in tightly with this strategic plan. And so we'll be looking at, for instance, let's say we're focused in on a future focused educational opportunity. So let's say we're working on a new program. Maybe it's beyond visual line of sight for drone operations. We know the only way that's going to be successful is to have support from the foundation. And so built directly into the plan, we'll be working with Catherine and her team so they can see exactly what we're working on, where our needs are, and how the foundation fits in with that. I would say that the Freshwater Research Innovation Center has been a trial run of that. It wasn't explicitly developed this way in the plan, and we've been able to make that work really well. So we'll call those out. Also, as we look at funding opportunities or our stewardship in our strategic driver, you know, there's, we'll be working with the foundation around the 75th campaign, looking at other opportunities to engage donors. And so we are trying to embed them specifically into strategies and goals so that they can see in real time what they're working towards. And part of how we'll do that is by having Catherine be a co-champ or co-leader, however you want to call that, tying the each strategy back to that stewardship value when it comes to revenue diversification or funding.
Excellent. I think it's a really good move on the foundation's part. So any questions or comments from you or Jason? With that, thank you, sir. That was an excellent update. And I can't let you leave the podium without once again saying that, Jason, you are doing this without a consultant this year. You are doing this fully led by your skill and your growth in this area. And that does not go unrecognized. So we needed a consultant to help us get this started. It was a brand-new, robust plan, but you are taking us into a new level, single-handedly, with your team, of course, but from a leadership perspective that's very much recognized. We appreciate what you're doing.
I appreciate that. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Diana Fairbanks and her kind of new role with Strategic Change. She's jumped into this with me.
Yeah.
And then we obviously con Lynn into being part of our process too. She's really great about being a sounding board, especially looking back at the previous plan. But it wouldn't be possible without those two and others.
I couldn't agree more. I think we've just made some very impressive changes within our strategies and how we develop them and execute them. This is a very impressive process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's turn our attention back to the Great Lakes Water Studies Institute and the Director of that program, Mr. John Luchka. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Luchko.
Luchko? Okay. Probably helps to put my glasses on. See, that's a, oh, not an A. John, talk to us about where you are at with the program, its enhancement and sustainability as noted in the program. And Jason, are you going to join John or start us off?
Yes, I'm going to start it off and frame it.
Okay.
Because if you recall, the Program Enhancement and Sustainability Review was born out of the charge that President Nisley gave us and Troy did as well, as to looking at our programs and really evaluating them, not only for how are they performing financially, but where are their opportunities? And so Pacer was the acronym that we threw around for this one. And at our July board meeting, which was over in Parsons Stulins, meeting with the board, it said, hey, this is an opportunity for us to dig in a little bit deeper as to what goes on next with a program like Great Lakes Water Studies Institute that did not meet the metrics that were laid out in Strategy Five of the previous strap plan. What goes on next? Do you just forget about them, or do we move into something else? And this is a prime example of how we further really focus in on the performance of the plan. I'm going to give the overview and then I will turn it back to John on there. So remember, this was proactive financial planning. This was continuous improvement. There's a reason, you see the Culinary Institute right there. So GLCI really was one of the first to go through a Pacer-type review. At the time, we called it reimagining the Great Lakes Culinary Institute, but it did this work and set the framework for it. And the college has a history of program reviews throughout its time, whether we look from an academic standpoint, or a resourcing standpoint, or financials. But this is a near-term or more recent opportunity where not only did we go through the beginnings of this process, but we've had really good success. I mean, the Culinary Institute has done a significant turnaround, and it was following a Pacer format, and that's what drove this one. We look at financial trends, enrollment trends, and the viability of the job market. So we're looking at, where is there opportunities? You've just heard from a student that's in one of our programs that has lots of opportunities in terms of job market, what are those enrollment trends? And then financially, how are these programs doing here at the college? Just a reminder, in 2024-25, we selected three programs for our current iteration of program review, that was GLMA, that looked at maximizing the use of the Robinson Bay tug, and then also some curriculum revisions around the number of cruises. That's something that Jerry and his team continues to work on with some estimated impacts in there. Dinos, again, creating, facing pressures from federal funding changes, also with own demographic shifts of the Dinos Museum, is in their own program review, looking at facility rental opportunities, leveraging the 75th, and then how do we maximize the profitability of this store, and that's something that Craig and his team have dived into. Two different selections there between two different programs. And then Great Lakes Water Studies Institute, that's the one John's going to be talking about. You know, we, at the beginning part, we've done some adjustments with staffing, following our process of not filling a position when John moved into the director role. We've adjusted some tuition, which we'll get into, and I'll give you some more specifics. But again, we stacked up these three programs as our first round of Pacer review. And then in '25, '26, this year, we will launch the next round. But I think it was important for John to give an overview of what the Great Lakes Water Studies Institute is and what it encompasses.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, everyone. And so what is GLWSI? We already addressed that, right? It's the best programs that no one's ever heard about. I hate to say that, but that tends to be the case. So academically, of course, you're very familiar with the Marine Technology Program as our student, Sonya Laws, just talked about. We have two programs, we have two academic degrees, a two-year, an AAS, and a bachelor's degree, which we're very fortunate to be able to offer. We have a freshwater studies degree, which is our legacy degree. That was our first degree. I'm actually an alumni of that program, which has really turned into a true transfer pathway into those partner universities. And then we have the water quality environmental technology, or WETTEC, we call it, another associate's degree, which we're struggling a little bit in growth there, but we're hopeful with the strong advisory board that we have in place right now in those jobs. Those students are starting to come out, because we are in year three of that program. Hopefully we'll start to have some real data that we can use for our recruiting efforts there. We have a professional development arm, which has been very successful over the years. The Marine Center, that's customized training for really whoever needs it, and it's really been an opportunity to listen to the industry, listen to the professionals out there, what do they need, and then build that training around those needs. Micro credentials, so giving our own micro credentials, but also offering micro credentials through the Marine Technology Society, so partnering with that organization to deliver those micro credentials. Webinars, conferences, and events like the Lakebit 2030 Conference, which has been very successful this year. It's not happening as it usually is because it's part of the Oceans 25 Conference in Chicago, but next year in fall of '26, it will return to Traverse City. Applied research, very fortunate to have, you know, I really call this Applied Research and Strategic Partnerships, because what we have is we have a strong industry partnership, whether it be NOAA, USGS, so the federal side, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Our students are able to go there and do capstone projects and work with those folks over there. The Army Corps of Engineers, we've done some customized training for them, but also they're supporting us with some opportunities for our students. And Consumers Energy, which has been a very great partnership from a couple of standpoints, our student experience, they get to actually go onto their sites and do work, do real-world work, working with consumers, having them tell the students what they want as far as inspection, and then our students figuring out how to deliver those needs. They did just sell their dams. I will say that I did find out from a colleague of mine that we're still going to be supporting that organization, that new company that's going to be operating their dams. So nothing will change except the name on the dam operators. So that's good news. Innovation Challenge, the Blue Tech Challenge, which we have three finalists. Those will be, the winner will be named next week in Chicago at the Oceans Conference. Very excited to be part of that. And then, of course, the Freshwater Research Innovation Center, which we just experienced about a week and a half ago, fantastic. Groundbreaking, very excited about that. Our students are very excited about that. And I will be remiss if I didn't mention also the excellent grant that we just received in partnership with GBSU and Notre Dame. That's going to be, that's going to be pretty awesome. I'm very excited. Some of the students that are going to be gone by then are very excited. They're trying to figure out ways to stick around and maybe add another year or two to their degree so they can be part of that. So very comprehensive, very applied as far as what we do. You hear that from our students, whether it be Sonya today or just the stories that I get to tell in my recruiting efforts. But the iron is hot, and I think the time to strike is now, and I'm very, very excited for the future. And again, we'll talk more about that in detail.
I mean, I think what you heard from John is this isn't a traditional academic program. It's made up of so many other pieces that are critical, not only to the NMC, but also to the larger freshwater community. So you guys have seen this chart. I'm not going to go over this chart again. This is the one that we had in July. And we were trending. We were trending in a positive direction, but not at the rate that we wanted to. And so on the right there, I gave you some additional details of where our average revenue sits, and then where our expenses caught up. And, you know, I think if you looked at that, I mean, our biggest bucket of expenses is tied up to our wages and benefits. But I always think it's important to dig deeper, because when you look at the staffing model, it's lean. I'll just use the word lean on there. I mean, we have John in director role, we have an unfilled manager position, we have one other full-time coordinator. We're fortunate enough to share a faculty member with our humanities and social science programs. And then we have a quarter role inside of our PD Director. And so I just wanted to share with the group is we've made efforts to lean out our staffing to the point that we can still deliver strong academic programming, and there's not much fluff in there. The Northwestern is our research vessel. It's heavily used. It's technology-heavy. John pursues grants all the time, like you saw with this NSF one. We're also working on one with GT County. But on there, we still have an average loss of about 350K that's based in there. We do other things outside, including teach the Yellow River Conservancy to try to supplement that. John starts his class at 5:00 AM right now, as we do a hybrid model. But, you know, those are still parts that we're driving towards it. What's not captured in here, and we don't count, these are all WSI prefix courses. So we have an additional, about 275K that goes back to the college. Those are in our technical classes, electronics, we have a double major there, our science areas, math, et cetera. We try to leverage hard our environmental and other classes from our general education areas, but they don't count towards this bottom line with how we're structured.
Jason, question for you. What is the target, what does headcount look like for this fall semester right now, the one we're in right now?
Yeah, so we are, we are right now.
Yeah, because you have, I mean, what's been constant for five years is we've had constant headcount.
Well, no, we've gone up right here. Here's my trend line. I mean, we're at 48 right now in impact, up from 30 and 22. I could, we're getting close to 60 on there. I can pull it out with count day.
Go back a page. Look at the headcount number that you have for fiscal year, for each of the years. Your fall is 53, 49, 59, 50. Every year it's roughly the same.
Well, yes, as we're looking at total, total in the program in there, I break it out. So this is where this gets tricky. I like to look at a marine technology degree because that's where our bachelor's of sciences is housed, and that's where our differential tuition was. And so this baseline, yes, when we looked at the institute as a whole, we were pretty steady in terms of, in terms of the numbers, but our, as we pulled them off the dashboard, but our growth is really in that marine tech program, and we're up towards 50.
So the question is, what's our number right now?
I can pull it off the dashboard.
Are we?
We're about 60.
We're about 60. So we've increased, which is awesome, right?
Yeah.
Let's celebrate that.
Well, I'll be, it's hard to celebrate that. I don't have room to celebrate with this board and with others when I pull this up. So we're doing this, this Pacer is not a celebration for this program. So I hear what you're hearing, Andy.
But it's been 50 the whole time. If you tell me it's 60 now, that's a significant increase. It's why we were asking to see this, right?
Yeah.
Because the number was constant.
I know. And I don't mean to be sensitive. I serve as a buffer between our administration and our program, because I can't let, I have to make sure that John has the story he has. And so while I appreciate the celebration part, well, it's tough when we're running, you know, a person low.
I get it.
Yeah. So yeah, we're trending in the right direction. I feel that. But, you know, it's work that we have to continue to do as we grow that enrollment. I think we can get up towards in that 70s on there. But this is a hard program. This is a tough program. It has a lot of twists and ties to it on there. Real quick, I want to look at the scenarios, and then, Kenner, I'll wrap it up with some questions on there. We did go through the scenarios, and so we're actually increased the enrollment with a national recruiter. So our goal is to bring in a recruiter. Nick actually spotted us the money for three years to bring in a national recruiter and try to grow this program. And we have targets that are probably going up. And we have targets that are probably going up significantly more than what we currently have, trying to hit up those markets that the Maritime Academy and others are in, you know, targeting the Gulf Coast, partnering with them, East Coast, and others, military bases. We reevaluated our tuition and fees, so we've actually done some adjustments with the support of this board in our 100 and 200 level courses. And we've actually right-sized the additional fees related to the course. We continue to pause that program manager at about $113,000, but, I mean, that's something that puts a lot of pressure on our internal stakeholders, as I mentioned, and then we continue to roll out some of that professional training. So we're sitting in here, I got a three-year window, and so I don't know where we're going to be in three years. This is the route that we're going, but this is a tough one for us to get over, especially when I look at what we bring back to the college on there. I mean, we probably can bring back in the order of, you know, 300,000 to 400,000 additional dollars for the college as a whole, pushing us up towards a million dollars in overall tuition, but it doesn't get captured in dashboards like this. And so.
Could you talk for a minute about the national recruiter? Have you used that anywhere else before? Is this your test case? I mean, that's a very different thing than what we've talked about before and kind of an interesting approach.
I was kind of born out of, you know, previous suggestions that you guys have raised to us, and, you know, I think Jason and John have been proven in their efforts, and we were willing to say, yes, let's support that. It's an investment, you know, it's an upfront expense, but they're showing a positive net return with that investment. In other words, the theory of change is that it's going to grow our enrollment.
Have you thought about that for other parts of the campus then as well?
Well, we're kind of, so like our surveying recruiter is like a regional type recruiter, and we've seen gains in that. We went up from 12 to 18 students in just one year, and so that's a 50% increase, and that's regional. Now, we look at GLMA and their reach across the U.S., and it kind of told us like, hey, we've got to try it. So if we keep saying we're the best program that no one's heard of, then we have to do something to try it. We might be done in three years and say, this is the number we are, and we have to kind of reevaluate it from there, but this is kind of our shot to see what happens. This person started today. He's getting onboarded right now by John and his team, and we're going to give this a heck of a shot, and I hope that that line keeps going up like that. But one of the things with this is, again, those students come in our pipeline this fall. We don't get them into differential tuition classes for two more years. They start at our graduation. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, have you comment on two things. One is the experience with students and graduates with employment, and two, the future of Yellow River in view of the politics we're having with China.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so we still boast 100% job placement in the Marine Technology Program. I'm careful to say that's in the Marine Technology Program. They work all over the world. I mean, it's absolutely fascinating the places that my graduates end up, and I live vicariously through their stories and what they get to do because they get to do some really cool stuff, whether it be Antarctica, the Apostle Islands over the summer, and really everywhere in between. It's pretty exciting, but the careers are there, the careers are real. We have that extensive network of folks that know about us. We have a company moving here. Of course, they like Traverse City this time of year, but it's because of the pipeline of students. I think that's a big part of it. They know the caliber of students that we're putting out, and so they're saying, we want to be first in line, so to speak, to get those students, so.
And then Yellow River, Kenner, the political stuff is real. I mean, I have to tell you that. We launched our next cohort this fall. It's online here in fall of '25, and then in-person for two weeks in April of '26, and we'll move forward with one more iteration of that. We're signing year-to-year contracts with them, so that would be the fall of '26, spring of '27, only to close out this gap because there will become a point where if we are successful in the recruitment of students, that we need to start focusing stateside with this program and with the students that we have in the current pipeline. We will continue to look at that year to year. Maybe there's alternative solutions, I don't know, but right now, because we are using our current staffing to teach this, we're using it kind of as a band-aid over our financial issues that we're struggling with. Also monitoring the headwinds closely with Gabe and others because it can be a little politically charged.
Is there more to your presentation? Okay, got you. I just didn't want to cut that short before we open it up to more questions and comments. Go ahead, Mark.
I think it's really exciting to put forth some resources to kind of, if you will, business development mindset to grow a program. I think we're going to learn a lot in this process, and I think that it's not only a way to address perhaps a deficit or a program that's struggling, but also look at how do we really top off the capacity that we have in other programs as well with putting forth that kind of new mindset, putting energy, business development mindset towards growing our programs. It's pretty exciting stuff.
Thanks, Mark, and that was supportive presentation. I love that happening. You know, working through the Pacer process, the Pacer team agreed with that recommendation, came forward with that and said, yeah, we support this with John's proposing, and then I got to give credit to Nick just stepping in and fucking making it happen.
I'll just add too that, you know, I was asked on numerous fronts, do you think this could work? Do you think this is a good idea? And unequivocally, yes. I believe, again, that message where we need to be more well-known, there are, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, if I'd only known about this program before, right? Well, let's get on the front end of that, and let's get on and recruit, and let's get on and make sure that people know about our programs and know about what they have, that they can be when they're done, you know, in their career pathway. So I do believe that we're going to make some progress. I don't know how we couldn't with what the stories that we get to tell and the level of education they can get here by coming to Traverse City. And then again, you know, if we look at the recruiter that just started today, he's going to figure it out. But I even told him today, I said, Merrick, let's start locally and then start to broaden out because I think there's a ton of work to be done here and broadly, more in Michigan, and then let's start looking out beyond those traditional borders. But let's start local and move out. I think that's the right approach.
Any other questions or comments? Well, this is a proven program that has turned around, and we've had some tough conversations, and it's been hard to watch such a great program over the time have such a deficit to our bottom line, and that's where it catches our attention. But you've done an outstanding job in the transition. We had a big transition, and John, we appreciate your step up to leadership in this role, but also the Pacer program has proven now twice to really, really be an important part of our program overviews. So thank you both very much. Appreciate you being here.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we are now going to move into our reports and presentations, and we get to hear from our faculty, and I see Mr. Charlie McPhee making his way to the podium. You've given us some great information here. I hope we don't have a test after this on this, but we. We look forward to hearing about our construction technology. We have about five minutes with you, and I know Lynn has a timer. If that goes off, we'll just move into the wrap-up phase.
I understand, and she helped me distill 16 weeks down to five minutes.
Isn't she great? Isn't she?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Charlie McPhee. I teach two classes here at NMC, Sustainable Design and Construction Cost Estimation. Today, my background, I'm trained as an architect and throughout my four-year career in industry, I graduate architecture, construction management, real estate development, management consulting, as well as wireless infrastructure. And I fly as the National Practice Data for Boeing Consulting's research advisory services, where we help clients align their capital strategy to manage their strategic business objectives. So with that, let's talk about the NMC Construction Cost Estimation. For the class, we picked the Culvers Restaurant, which I trust you've all visited at some time or other, and one of the reasons being is the prerequisite for the class is blueprint reading, and they use the same set of construction documents, drawings, and specifications. So it just makes sense from a pedagogical standpoint to build upon that, and thus we go into construction cost estimation. Where do you start? I start with the big picture with the students. Students need to understand what they're getting themselves into with this industry. It's a very competitive industry. It's a very cyclic industry, so I find it prudent to let them know this career path that they're taking and what they're going to be dealing with as they advance their career. Research, it's a 12 to 15 trillion dollar industry globally. United States is number two at about 2.3 trillion. The construction industry employs approximately 5% of the working population in the United States, and contributes about 4.5% of the gross domestic product. This is where we come in. 78% of national regional construction firms can't find people, can't find trades, and there's a variety of reasons for that. The U.S. construction industry is short about 500,000 skilled workers, and we're in another paradigm shift. I've been through a couple of paradigm shifts, computers. I'm a PC generation, before computers, I knew what the world was like. I went with computers, then the internet, and now we're into technology and sustainability. Students need to know that they are in one of the lowest profit margin industries in the economy. You've got the bankers, the insurance companies at the top, and you have construction industry down towards the bottom. They manage a suite of about a 3% profit, net profit, after all of their costs. So it's a tough industry, and they need to know that going into it. As I drill down, before it's a construction project, it's a real estate project. And I introduce the students to the Stage Gate Framework, which I've used in the industry with regards to its proactive project management, risk management, if you will. And the students get involved gate four, five, and six. That's what we cover in the class. They also need to understand the contractual relationships between the owner, the architects, the contractors, the subconsultants, the subcontractors, to understand the bigger picture of where a construction estimate is generated and how they contribute to that. In this particular case, the class performed as the construction, or the cost estimation team for the general contractor. How do you translate a needed real estate asset into a building? We look at scope, budget, schedule, quality, and the three key performance indicators, schedule, budget, and quality. Now, working, the architects, engineers, and contractors work with the owner to define the target. You can have it fast and cheap or cheap and high quality. You can't have all of them. You have to make a decision, what's most important to you, and based on that, the owner will decide in the end where they want their project to be with regards to those three key performance indicators. Turn the architects and engineers loose, they do the construction documents, drawings, specifications, and finding the correct contract form to deliver their project. There's four different basic contract forms with 12 iterations. There's a contract form to fit it that needs to be identified early in the project. The manner of a construction cost estimate, really explore and understand the process of procedural controls to deliver a professional cost estimate, which we have a copy of in front of you, which the students produced. I'll hit some highlights here, given the time constraints. I use the Association for Advancement of Cost Engineers. It's a globally recognized organization, and they do nothing but study how to do cost engineering, cost economics, everything associated with the cost of a capital asset. They know how to put a number on it through a very rigorous process. The class also learns key performance indicators that I've discussed, the budget, schedule, and quality, estimation fundamentals. They require hands-on experience. We've had some success this spring of '25 with regards to getting the students hands-on experience. There's of course the process for the ACEE, and one of the most important to me, the estimation tool, is I have the students call contractors and subcontractors in the local market to get prices for various aspects of the building because the contractors, they have the most accurate data. There's lots of published data out there, but construction cost pricing, especially post-COVID, it's like the stock market, it changes every day. So you really, that's where you get the most accurate informations from the contractors. Project cost, where you influence the project cost is during the strategic phase. The strategic phase is everything that happens before groundbreaking. It's during the design of the project where you have maximum control over the project. As you can see, that blue area, once that project starts, the clock starts ticking, the train pulls out of the station, and your opportunity to impact the cost rapidly closes. So you can make those decisions early in the project, you roll your sleeves up, get the team going. If you get the strategic part right, the tactical part is going to be much more smoother for everybody. The AAC estimate graph, consider this as a funnel, if you will. It starts out, basically, if you see on the right-hand side, you start out, you have low, a low-quality information of what the project is, you go through a medium quality, then you actually get to a detailed quality as those construction documents advance along the life cycle. That information is simultaneously fed to the contractor, and they update the pricing accordingly. The students, which you see up here, the baseline for the restaurant was $1.7 million. The baseline is not the actual number in the end, it's the estimate that the team came up with to determine what's the ballpark that we're going to be in. And then based on the AAC methodologies, we'll say plus 15%, minus 10%, plus 5%, minus 5%. That's defined by the owner. That target's defined by the owner, and then we act accordingly. I'd like you to refer to the last page of this handout here. If you look at, you'll see the 1.73 million, that's the total project cost, hard cost, soft cost. Then we put a contingency on it, a plus and minus number, and say, okay, we're going to define the target, plus or minus, the parameters reset early in the class. So we got a plus of 1.9 million and a minus 10% of, I guess it'll probably be 1.5 million. So basically, that defines the target by which we're going to work with them, and once the project's bid, they do get the real market price and what is actually the cost. This is just defining the target.
It was faint, but we did hit our timer, so I don't want you to stop right now, but if you could get to your summation, that would be great.
Oh, absolutely. Summary. Although I'll separate to it.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's really, the whole purpose of the class is learn cost estimation, but also get hands-on industry experience, but also build their network, absolutely build their professional network because that's where you're going to find the best job. That's a skill that can be learned, so that's very important. Continuing, I'll go right here, ideas, how to augment, you know, align, connect. It's construction technology with the capital program here at NMC, along with facilities. Working with fabric and facilities, we were able to get access to the hangar, and we had some tours over there, looked at the drawings. So the next step would be get access to the freshwater project that is currently starting construction, as well as the Fish Pass. That's a world-class, that's a world-class project that's going on right now. We should be right into it. It's not just construction technology, marine technology. Also, Nick Vassar in biology did the plastic studies in the water, and he did get involved. There's a number of different disciplines within NMC that can participate in that project. So I'm going to work with Jason here and try and figure out how we can get access to some of these projects. Another thing is write a rider into your service contracts. You know, we're, you know, if you, you know, we're going to spend money with you, leverage your brand and your buying power. If we're going to spend money with you, you're going to help us, you know, train these students that you're going to hire one day. So get, you know, bring that community stronger, actually put it into your contract, and that's presented through lectures, have them attend a project meeting, have them take meeting minutes, that would be an assignment. Just get access to the environment by which they're going to be working. Last but not least, some of these things are already going on, apprenticeships and internships with industry, that's so important. So to summarize, it's really to link, you know, how the industry does construction cost estimates with the industry in order for the students to get access to the actual construction industry which they're going to be working in for their careers. I'll open up the questions, that's it.
Yeah, excellent, excellent information. I'm sure we do have some questions or comments. Go ahead, Mark.
How did you end up here as an adjunct?
Well, I retired in 2018 out of Chicago, and I was always going to come back to Michigan. I'm a, my work base city, I'm from Michigan, and Traverse City was always the target. Traveled my whole career, had to move to stay employed, and it was what I wanted to do. And I was about two years, and I always had the strategy to pay it back, right? I had, fortunate to have mentors in my career that really showed me the ropes, how the industry works. So I always felt, you know, when I get the opportunity, I'm going to pay it back. So ad came up, and I called Dan and sent a resume, and I'm only in my fourth year now teaching, I'm still a work of progress. We started teaching in academia, taught the corporate world at academia. So that's how I ended up here, was just I want to pay back, but also as, you know, Richard Feynman said, you know, if you want to teach something, if you want to learn something, teach it. And that just, it just, you know, it just made so much sense to me. So basically, the bottom line is I want to get back. I love this industry. this industry. You don't just take 40 years and stick it on a shelf and, you know, do nothing. I wanted to, you know, contribute to building the future leaders of the industry.
Great. Good question. Anything else? You know, did I miss a handout? No, okay. As you well know, Northwestern Michigan College, our college, is an experiential learning institute at the end of the day. And so these ideas that you have here are really helping us to pursue our strategies, to become just that, an experiential learning institute. These are great ideas, and I can't imagine it would have many barriers, if any barriers, to get them done. So thank you for your wisdom and, and your big thinking.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to share stories and be an ambassador for construction technology.
You bet. It was nice to have you here. Thank you so much, Charlie. And we're going to convert from construction technology to capital outlay plan and overview. Troy, welcome to the podium. We look forward to hearing about fiscal year '27, our five-year capital outlay plan.
Okay. I am here up here today to remind you simply that we have a compliance requirement, P A 431 of 1984, that we submit an annual state capital five-year outlay plan. That's due at the end of October. There's really two pieces to it. One is required, one's optional. The required part includes everything from, you know, stating our mission, vision, values, to specific facility needs, to, you know, key programs, conditions of those buildings, employee headcount, enrollment. So it's really a, a large document that, you know, for the state's purpose, they want to know what all the state needs are for the community colleges and universities. So that's the required part. The second part is a, an optional piece, which we've continued to take advantage of, but it's our project that we would be asking the state to help fund at 50%. For the last seven years, we've submitted the Osterland project, except for 2022, and the state decided not to accept projects that year because of pandemic. But my recommendation is that we continue to submit Osterland. It's, we, really, from our master plan standpoint, is our only viable project that we have that meets the criteria of state capital outlay. You can't have a project that's going to generate revenue, like a housing project, or a gym, or any other type of revenue generating facility. The state will not allow those under this program. So again, I'm just here, up here to remind you that we have those requirements. You'll see the report in October. It will become the largest board packet you'll have for the year, because not only will you have the capital outlay plan, but our financial audits coming in October. So just wanted to forewarn you with that, but also want to answer any questions, if there are any from the board. Yes?
Have you considered using A I to go through that report and take out the parts that say things like, in 2013, we're going to do such and such? That whole document could probably be cut in half if we eliminated all the material in it that talks about what we were going to do five or 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's a great opportunity with A I. I think we, we do try to go through it every year and, and update it to the best of our knowledge, and there's very specific questions we have to answer. But if we can condense it and make it more efficient.
What we do is just keep putting answers on top of answers and not taking out the old answers.
Is, I don't know. That's, is that accurate?
I don't, I don't believe that's accurate, but we did go through it pretty, I think, intensely last year or the year before. So again, it is, it is a compliance requirement. It doesn't, to me, add a whole lot of value. We have a separate campus master plan document called N M C Thrive that we, or I should say I, and the executive team are fully focused on executing. So this is, in some ways, you know, a compliance requirement. It's great transparency for the college, but, you know, it's a large document and a lot to go through. So.
Troy, I would just add for everyone that even though you heard us say that, you know, this is the seventh time, that shouldn't be seen as a negative reflection on the college, that I think in simple terms, it's a broken process. There's literally a ranking process, and at the end of the day, the legislators do not follow the rankings, even though last year we received, I think, a number two.
Second or third, yeah, correct.
So the legislators have very explicitly said they do not follow that, and it's just a broken process. So we have to play the lottery, or play the sort of randomness of it, but this is our number one project.
All the more reason to enhance our revenues so that we can take care of our students in a timely fashion. Any other questions or comments for Troy? Okay, Troy, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, I see he's already standing up because he's so excited to make his way to the podium and talk to us about the good news in enrollment. Let's hear it, Todd.
Well, I have to say, the first couple of years that I did this, it was a really long.
I know. You, you wouldn't stand up in advance. Well, we are excited to have you here and report this news, Todd. Thank you.
Sure. There's several good news items. There's certainly, there's the overall enrollment, which is contact hours up 8.2%, seventh consecutive semester. So that's certainly in there. Another item to highlight is dual enrollment, early college enrollment. Back to 2023, we did a tuition study looking to adjust that because we weren't, we're finding ourselves not competitive. And that's where we had, came up with our, our out-of-district dual-enrolment tuition rate that we now use. And we calculated at that time, we would need 128 additional students to break even basically on the revenue part of it. And to the, for this fall, and we now have 157 more students. So that was, that was really welcome news, and we're seeing that percentage of high school enrollment becoming a larger, larger part of the overall student body. So that's worked out really well. And I would have to say too, housing, although we, you know, it's a, it's a struggle, and it's in the master plan because of that. But this is the first time since I've been here that we've basically filled all of our housing options. In fact, even with the, adding the apartment capacity that we did, you can see from the report that we still have a really long waiting list. So, you know, we've maximized our housing, we've done things to add to it, and now we still have, that's still before us. But it does kind of lay out the truth of the forecasting that we were doing through that master planning process. So, I mean, that's kind of the, the really, really, the quick version of it, but I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have around enrollment.
Are we looking at more additional housing?
Yes. We, the master plan right now calls for both additional housing, additional apartment capacity, and for additional dormitory capacity. And that'll be something that will, you know, take place over the next five years or so. Troy and I had conversations about the order of those. It feels like the, the apartments are the, probably the next, also the next step. We have, at least in my mind, the, we have an opportunity to add capacity without actually having to go backwards, you know, for years. Like, oh, we're going to take these offline while we tear down old apartments and put up new ones. We actually have opportunity with space on the new property that we bought to add an additional building while we perhaps take one down so that we don't have, actually take, go backwards in capacity.
And have we looked at talking to the city about that 11 acres of land that we did it to the city for a dollar 20 years ago, and then they wanted to sell it back to us for hundreds of thousands? They, they're not going to use it. Is it possible that maybe somebody over there is going to be a little more reasonable, and we could talk to them about that?
Well, I can't predict that. I know 2017 was the last time we had that conversation. Troy's office would have been having those, those conversations with them when we got the news that they weren't going to just sell it back to us for a dollar, like we sold it to them. So, I mean, that is a viable piece, but we also have space, both in the new apartment complex on Front Street, Front Street Flats, and also by increasing the density of the building, of where the current apartments are, to be able to add that. Also, we have the, we do have some other alternative spaces where an additional dormitory could go without necessarily having to get that back from the city if the city was not going to.
Maybe this is a good time to talk while they're running for office.
Go ahead, Andy.
Summer revenue was down about 100,000. Do we have any idea of, like, what caused that, or what did we learn from it? That doesn't happen.
Down 100,000? Our total summer housing was 300, revenue was 349.9?
I'm sorry. I looked at the 24 number, my mistake.
And we've had some, we've.
That was my mistake.
No, that's okay. But we've had some variation in this. Parallel 45, in 2022, or let's see, 2023, you could see that we took a jump down on our North Hall revenue. We lost Parallel 45, the Arts Group, but we've been able to build that back, mostly with an increased number of students. It used to be, we'd have like 17 students stay the summer. It's over 90 this past summer, which is good. That's who we're there for first. And then we also had a contract with Interlock and Arts Academy for summer campers. They ran out of space, and so we were able to house them in East Hall, which gave us more revenue from East Hall than we've had before.
I read 24's number.
That's right.
That was my mistake.
Sure.
If I can just reiterate something Todd said, because he said it kind of matter-of-factly and humbly, but it's important to shine the light on. He talked about the out-of-district dual enrollment rate. And Todd very courageously took on a pricing strategy to lower that rate. And obviously, part of the concern was, are we going to end up inadvertently hurting ourself with that butt based on some good data and some good, I think, sound risk-taking? Todd encouraged us to, to do that. And as you heard him say, that break-even number was 128 new students. We got 157 thus far. So it's proving to be a very effective strategy. And I'd say thanks to Todd's courage with it.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments for Todd? How do we compare Todd to other community colleges in the state on this increase in enrollment? We're at.
We're about mid, maybe above the halfway line. That seems to be a place that we occupy no matter what. When you looked at the long decline across all community colleges, we were right in the center at the average. And that, that seems to be a place that we, we occupy in, whether it's going up or down. There's a, there's a ton of variables that go into the differences in enrollment between the different community colleges. They're all very different animals in their own way. So that can be, it can be, I've tried for many years to, to try to isolate variables, and it's very difficult. But, yeah, there's, there are some, at least in the last cycle. I think one of the things that makes it difficult sometimes to compare to is that we don't have consistent enrollment reporting from, from all schools every year. So, anyway.
Okay.
But just to follow up on that, is by the same token, the increase that we perceived here for, or had for several semesters is really quite remarkable in light of what we've been hearing about high school student graduates, their rates of applying to college. So are we just observing some kind of reversal of maybe the rate at which kids are going onto college? Are we gaining at the expense of the universities? What, what's going on?
I think we'll need to wait till January to get, I mean, the, the guarantee was new last year in July, which means it really didn't have time to get word out. So this year, we see that in, in there. I'd like to really see what the January state numbers are, which will give us a, an accounting of our past June graduates, where they went, and that kind of thing. One of the things that we've been struggling with, obviously we know about demographics. 2010, there was 350 to 400 more graduates every single year from our five-county area. So that's not, that's not changing. That's, has continued to, to track downwards. It's the rate of college attendance. That is our biggest competitor, is not going anywhere at all. And where that had been, well over 60% for this region, it now sits around 53%. The state's in a similar, kind of dive on that. And so, and that's one that maybe we have a little, we don't, we can't really control the demographics so much, but we can, we can message towards the value of college, of, of getting either, you know, a trade certificate or degree, or certainly starting your, your pathway to a bachelor's degree here. Those are things we can message to. But those are, you know, besides the demographics, which are continuing down, you know, it's the convincing them of the value, and that will help. We're probably going to hit a plateau at some point in the, if not next year, the following year. But there's other factors in there. Unemployment, which has ticked up, is a big predictor too of enrollment, so.
And as you mentioned, there's a number of levers here that make this all work. Do you retain more students? Do you admit more students? You know, how do you target them? Where's your next dollar? Where do you think we can have additional gains by putting a little bit more focus on? Which of those things? Is it targeting retained students? Is it, is it targeting, you know, admits? Is it getting us a bigger pool? Where do you think that next incremental dollar should be? I mean, you're, you're the one playing these numbers. You probably have a better idea than any of us, anybody else in the room with this.
Well, you always start with the students you have. And, you know, I was gratified to see our continuing student, the rate of continuing students was up almost 2%. Again, you have to wait till January. You know how many of them were supposed to stay. But that's a good leading indicator of that. So we'd like to see you keeping your students and helping them complete. But again, as I mentioned to Ken, we need to, we need to regain that percentage of students who are not going anywhere. We need to retain and get that back, because that was a point where you didn't see that, that didn't hurt the universities that much. They lost about 2% overall in the state of their enrollment from that demographic decline. What we saw is they, by and large, those were students who were likely to have been community college students, who have now decided not to go anywhere. And so that, I think that's the one that we need to, to have the biggest focus on, besides the students that we already have and helping them complete.
Lot of hard work has gone into these numbers, and Todd, we really appreciate your leadership. I don't think it's going to plateau. I'm going to keep, think it's going to keep rising. We've got too much good going on, so.
I'm always hoping to be surprised.
Yeah. I'm going to prove you wrong on that plateau thing, okay? Thank you, Todd, very much. We are at the portion of our agenda to which we are at public input. We do have some public input tonight. Just a reminder that you'll have exactly three minutes, and we will have a timer on. And, and so at the end of three minutes, if you're not finished, we ask that you come to completion. And then finally, just to identify that we certainly take the, the comments into consideration and listen, we just don't comment on them. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Clifton Murray to the podium for your public comment.
Chairwoman, I'd like to wait for Mr. Weaver to return.
That's fine. Is that fine? We have quite an agenda.
We say you could change the order.
I am going to. We do have quite an agenda in front of us. We, we will, you're welcome to hang out right there, but I'm going to change up the agenda order a little bit so that we can cross something off while we're waiting for trustee Weaver, okay? All right. And why don't we move to the president's report?
Okay. I can't believe that it's been only a month since all of that Welcome Week and Move-In, that I haven't been able to share any feedback from that with you, because our last meeting was actually the week before, a few days before that. So what I want to say with regards to Welcome Week is to be sure I say it for the record of thank you, because many of you showed up for Move-In and drove golf carts and picked up boxes and helped move things with that. You helped flip pancakes and serve students there, as well as being part of opening conference, among many other things. So a big thank you for showing up and being part of, of Welcome Week. It was a tremendous success overall. I think a good vibe and energy on campus and helped launch the start of a great school year. Second, and specific to the opening conference, thank you, everyone, for showing up for that. The feedback that we received from within our own employees, faculty and staff, as well as the public, was what a great launch of the new brand. And I'm glad that just about everyone was able to be there to see that and participate and feel it for yourselves. I think it truly was a once-in-a-generation undertaking. And again, I said to Ken earlier that I don't know if you've gotten any negative feedback, but I've gotten zero, and I'm usually the guy who gets all the negative feedback. So it's been 100% positive feedback that I've heard. So a big hats off to Diana and the PR M C team. Third, I think everyone knows the state budget is at a standstill. And today, there was some reporting, some language regarding our House Speaker, Matt Hall. Two things that I heard him say were the words optimistic and confident with regards to the budget. to the budget being approved prior to October 1. That's the first time we've heard that in the last few months. Whether or not it materializes into something, we'll have to wait and see, but as you know, the legislature missed the July 1 deadline, and all the signaling that we're getting is that they're going to miss the October 1 deadline. We've budgeted conservatively, because as you know, three months ago, we approved our budget, and here we are, three months or first quarter into the year, and we still don't have a state budget. I feel confident in our conservative budgeting, but at the same rate, if there is the shutdown, that does have the potential of impacting our operationally, more from a cash flow perspective. But if it were to go on for more than a month, it could have an impact. But again, we hope that the state's going to pull together on that. I do want to shine the light on Catherine's work and the foundation. First, just in terms of what they've been up to, some incredible events over this last month. If you were able to attend the McIntosh, Mike McIntosh Car Show, they are the key drivers of that, along with our automotive faculty. Also, we had an alumni event out at the horse show, which was incredibly well-attended and a great energy, too. They drove that. The Freshwater Research Innovation Center groundbreaking, we were there to help cultivate and steward those donors, as well as the aviation ribbon cutting recently. And next week, they'll be up in Chicago at the Ocean's 25. So they have been just 100% engaged, and as you know, producing some real results. And I'd be remiss, too, if I didn't say just last week with the Denno's fall opening reception. So a lot of good work coming out of there, but the really heavy lifting is that work that we're going with the Winkler Group, that's helping us with the feasibility study. We've had a number of conversations or check-in meetings with them, including the end of last week, and I think we're all feeling optimistic and a bit anxious about, you know, the future, but it's coming together. We do have a meeting with the executive team, which will include Laura, as well as Pat, coming up, I think, in two days, and we'll hear the feedback from them of how that final report is shaping up. So it's too early for me to say, are we, aren't we going forward? That's what that final plan will tell us. And if we are, what's the right number that we should be targeting in terms of a goal? But I think Catherine and I are both feeling really confident with the work of the Winkler Group. They have engaged with, I believe, 53 face-to-face interviews, you know, one-on-one interviews with key donors, so we're getting some really good feedback in terms of receptivity for that next possible campaign. I'd also remind you, I know that many of you were present, but I guess it was two Fridays ago now, we had the Freshwater Research Innovation Center groundbreaking, and again, that begins that construction process, that by the spring of '27, we'll have a new building there, that $28.9 million building. We're still a tad shy of the fundraising, but confident that we're going to make up those next almost $2 million, and thus the moving ahead. But I think, I do want to say publicly here, a big thanks to Jason, because literally for the last two to three years, he's not only helped drive forward the vision, but he's done a lot of the heavy lifting, hand on hand with Matt McDonough, and it was great to, to see everyone out there. I think we had over 140 people show up, and if you just stop for a moment, I think 140 people showed up for the groundbreaking. I think that shows the community's passion and support and interest in this. Even though John, and I think John Leczko actually left, but I'll say it anyway, he said this in passing, and I think it's really important for me to say aloud and for you to hear it, even though I have communicated it with you. He, along with Grand Valley State and Notre Dame University, have earned an $800,000 National Science Foundation grant. You know that first off, National Science Foundation grants are really super competitive and hard to come by. The number of community colleges that earn it are just about none. And John not only earned that, but an $800,000 one with a great partnership. And I think what we're most excited about is, I think it's really going to expand GBSU's role in northern Michigan, and particularly with the Freshwater Research Innovation Center. So a big hats off to him for that. And the last thing I'd say, just three points of pride. If you have a chance to see Craig Hadley, go up to him and say a big congratulations, but make sure you refer to him as Dr. Hadley. And obviously, he's not as hung up on the title, but I say that a big tongue-in-cheek, to say he's earned his doctorate degree, and it's been a big undertaking, and I think it's only going to do so much more to help elevate the Denno's museum stature in the community, but also with funders. So really proud of Craig's accomplishment. You also saw the Traverse City Business News's 40 Under 40, and what we were most proud of there is there were 15 NMC alums in that 40 Under 40. So again, I think something you can be real proud of, that we're not just producing alums, we're producing alums who are making a big impact in our community. And the last thing, just to reemphasize what Todd said, because again, he said it so humbly, but that 8.2% enrollment growth for the seventh consecutive summer semester. But the thing that's most impressive is the housing report that he shared. And essentially, we're at 100% on the apartments with a waiting list of 81, and again, just essentially 100% on our residence halls as well. So I think it does show that, I think, 2027 and beyond, this is on the master plan agenda, and I think it's surely signaling to us it is something we need to be willing to move ahead with. I think I'll stop there and look to any questions or comments.
Good report. Thank you for the detail. No questions. Albert, thank you, Nick. I will return to Mr. Murray and our public comment. You're welcome to approach the podium again.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Of course.
Many of you are new, relatively new. I've been here a long time, and I wanted to say congratulations. NMC is more than 25 years ahead of its time in its administrators' willingness to stifle students and community members' free speech. In 1993, I was removed without cause from my radio show, given no due process, and trustee Robert Chase was recorded on 4/20/93 as saying he denied my right to free speech if it was critical of NMC. Several years later, when I was a writer for the White Pine Press, I was removed from the staff by President Nelson as I was preparing an article about Marguerite Cotto's one-and-a-half-year temporary appointment as Director of the University Center with only a Bachelor of Science in Agriculture from the University of Puerto Rico, instead of the PhD which was required. Both the radio station and the newspaper was supposed to be independent student organizations. My removal by administrators violated college policy and the norms of free speech, over 25 years before today's movement to censor the media. I was arrested in 2019 for attempting to address the Student Government Association. I'm sure you're aware of my lawsuit for malicious prosecution in federal court. More recently, in 2021, I returned to NMC as a student, intent on bringing leadership, reform and accountability to the Student Government Association, which had a long history of failing participation, pitifully inadequate meeting minutes and reports. I was railroaded out of the SGA with a frivolous red flag report by a fellow SGA member. NMC staff worked very hard to rule that I had harassed, intimidated, or threatened my fellow members, even though they were all on Zoom meetings. These charges were entirely without foundation. I was once again canceled by NMC administration. Congratulations. NMC has led the nation backwards with the repression of criticism, commentary, comedy and free speech. I encourage the trustees to accept my attorney's settlement offer and provide support for the reforms I have stipulated. Please recognize and accept that my tireless efforts to reform NMC's practices that violate policy and law are sincerely well-meaning for the betterment of this institution. The college's credibility and integrity have been challenged. How will you trustees respond? For many years, there has been no response. I look forward to having the trustees take appropriate action to protect the civil liberties, the mission and values that the college espouses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And I'll move forward with the agenda in my chair report, and I'll keep it short and sweet. I think we are approaching, prior to the next board meeting, the, thank you, Andy, the ACCT conference, and many of you are going. I apologize, I'm not able to join you at that, but I have been to a few of them, and they are so powerful. A couple of you have great experience attending. And one thing for those that are new around the table is that we work really hard to actually divide and conquer. There is an enormous amount of content for you to join in on, and I encourage all of you to continue with that, with that plan and get as much knowledge as possible. And I will definitely have on the, possibly the October agenda, possibly November, just depending on when you get back and timing of putting all that together, but I definitely want to hear the takeaway from ACCT, because it's always so powerful. I think that's where you started really getting to become so passionate about the AI options and that are out there for us, and, and we've had a lot of, it's where we actually, back at the ACCT, ACCT conference a couple of years ago, it's where we got some really good intel on how to pursue our master plan. And so the master plan ensued from an ACCT conference. So a lot of good stuff comes, and a lot of good stuff that allows us to take really innovative action. So that's really my chair report, is to wish you well to that conference, to really participate as we have before, divide and conquer, prepare to come back with your takeaways for the next board meeting. Any questions of me, comments? Okay. With that, we will keep this agenda moving, and we are at the portion of consent items. May I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'd like to vote.
Thank you, and support. Thank you, Ken. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. And a couple action items. First, we'll start with the local strategic value resolution. May I have a motion for the adoption of the presented local strategic value resolution certifying that NMC meets the best practice standards required by the State School Aid Act and appropriations law for fiscal year '26?
Alma.
Thank you. Support?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion on that?
Just one comment.
Yeah.
I love reading that document every year. I just think it's, it's really, reinforces my enthusiasm for what this place is.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate you making that comment. It, it is, it is a long read, and it's an important read, and it does really identify what we're made of, right? So thank you, I appreciate that comment. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And any abstentions on that? Okay, and that passes. Now for our additional item, item S. May I please have a motion for the authorization of administration to renew a five-year contract with EAB for the Starfish Enterprise Success Platform? This is at an initial cost of $59,000 and an overall five-year contract cost of $338,000. May I have a motion?
I'd like to vote.
Thank you. Second?
I'll support.
Thank you. And any discussion on this?
I got a question.
Yeah.
Could somebody tell me how the rates of this renewal compare with the previous rates?
So it's actually starting below what we initially licensed it for, but there's like a 5% elevation each year, which is pretty much in line with what our software licensing increases are amongst all of our systems.
So no surprises?
No, no surprises.
Good question, Ken.
Laura mentioned my infatuation with the AI sessions at ACCT last year. One of them was focusing specifically on student services platforms and so on. Is this one using, is this getting real modernized to, to apply AI to it or not?
They've, they've had predictive success scores in there for a bit now, but those are really algorithm-based, they're not, they're not AI-based. There are some improvements that it could probably make by telling it to filter out a few things here or there, but it is, it's still useful. They, on the roadmap as of yet that they've revealed, they haven't shown a huge increase in the number of AI enhancements within the particular product, but most likely, the first place that'll go is, I've seen in many of other systems, is in like communication drafting, that type of thing. We have a fair amount of communications that we, we send out through here.
I'm happy to support this this time, but I would encourage you to, if they are not going to move in that direction, that we take a look to see what else is available?
Sure.
May I actually, since we're in the discussion?
Yeah.
We did have a motion in support that we could discuss. The, so then, to follow up on that, because I have not benefited from the ACCT conference content yet, but one of the things that I often see is, like with new companies, that the consideration is, is it a legacy company that's trying to build in AI, or is it an AI company that's trying to address something that's already on the market? And so do we, with a five-year contract, are there hefty cancellation fees if in, you know, two and a half years from now, an emerging technology comes that has an AI platform built in that can do those communications and more?
We have a, like a 60-day notice on it, that, within writing, but I would say probably the biggest opportunity point we have for the infusion of, of the use of AI is actually within our student information system, which is something you'll likely hear more about over the, the course of the next year. But Lucian Banner, it's our largest investment, largest, and actually the most, has the most touchpoints with students and staff and its use. And that definitely has AI infusion in many different ways that, you know, not appropriate to get into them here tonight, but where I do see tremendous payoffs in terms of employee productivity and student service. So that's certainly, we can have that conversation in depth at another time.
Yeah. Good questions, comments. Thank you. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And any abstentions on that one? Great, that passes. Thank you, Todd. I do not have any follow-up requests. Lynn, did I miss something?
I did note what you said about the ACCT discussion.
Oh, thank you, yes. Make sure that's on the follow, following agenda. Anything else for follow-ups from anyone else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Asher.